The council meeting to order, Mary Jo, will you call the roll, please?
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Matt Mosley.
Here.
Aaron Barowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance and then we'll have an opening remark or prayer by the mayor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great truth and justice for all.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Selhertz asked me to offer tonight's opening remarks, and I just wanted to have a moment of silence for the tragedy that unfolded there in Russia with the terrorist attack on that theater. So if you could please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of two sets of minutes. The first is for February 12th. Any corrections, additions? We need a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
To approve: Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Next are the minutes from the meeting of March 11th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
To approve: Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll have our public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say pertaining to any legislative items on our agenda this evening, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Rob Slattery, 6600 Bezos Drive. I just want to come and speak about the piece of legislation about the permit fees that has been proposed by the mayor for the school. There's been a group of residents for probably more than seven years that have been, has tried to get this done. The last administration just ignored those pleas, showed disdain for the school, and didn't want to work with the school unless the school blindly followed them. So, thank you. I wanted to come here tonight and thank you for proposing this. I hope every one of the council people that votes in favor of this. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have anything? Okay, we'll move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. I'll start with the Finance Committee meeting. The Finance Committee did meet at 6:00 PM this evening, and these meetings are open to the public. And we noted that there are two notifications for grants we received. The first is Ohio EPA 2024 Recycle Ohio Grant Award. This is for an automated garbage truck, and the award was $200,000. The city's match is $194,760, and this was already provided for in our updated capital plan. The second grant is the 2024 Community Recycling Awareness Grant. This is for $3,747 that the city will use to purchase the recycling cart stickers. The other piece of legislation that the Finance Committee addressed was Under New Business 2024-9, and this is on first reading. However, Finance Committee did recommend that we adopt under suspension of the rules, as did the Committee of the Whole. This is enacting Section 1345.02, Fee Exemption Within the Building Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn, and this is to exempt the Board of Education from fees for the renovation projects. Next, the Committee of the Whole met at 6:15. In addition to addressing the items that were on the docket for the Finance Committee, we also discussed Ordinance 2023-40, Enacting Chapter 157 Inclusion and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. The Committee of the Whole did recommend that we substitute this, a new version of the legislation, and that will be on second reading this evening, and this has been amended. And I believe this is already uploaded to board docs for the public to see. And then Ordinance 2024-8, which is on second reading, amending Section 1105.03, General Fence Requirements Within the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. And next, we'll have the Recreation Board, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. City of Brooklyn presents Magic Adventures Ice Show with two showings, Friday, April 26th at 7:00 PM, or Saturday, April 27th at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $10 and can be purchased at www.brooklynrec.com. Spring activities at the Senior Center for April. April 3rd, Pizza and Movie, 1:00 PM, free event. April 5th, Kids' Fairyhouse Craft, ages six and up, 11:00 AM. Parents are welcome to stay and help their child with this activity. Cost is $10. April 8th, Solar Eclipse, event 2:00 PM. We will have a limited number of glasses to view the eclipse. April 10th, Mr. Re Lunch, Meet at the Senior Center at 11:30. Registration begins April 1st. Cost is $3. April 17th, Ice Cream Social at 1:00 PM. April 23rd, Playhouse Square Bus Trip, Meet at the Senior Center at 4:30 PM. Dinner at the Hofborough House at 5:00 PM. Registration starts March 25th. April 24th, Bingo, 1:00 PM, Brooklyn Pointe. April 29th, Ohio Wildlife Program with the Cleveland Metro Parks at 11:00 AM. Summer Day Camp, June 10th to July 5th at the Senior Center. The cost, $200 per week. Please contact Amanda Nadel at a nadel at clevelandymca.org, or call the Payment Registers Office at 216-263-6860 for more information. Brooklyn Rec Baseball and Softball, ages three to four, T-ball. Ages five to six, Coach Pitch, www.jumpstartsports.com. Age of 68, Coach Pitch Baseball and Softball. Registration is open and will run through March 31st. Resident fee $55, non-resident $65. Practices begin in May and games in June. Teams will travel to North Homestead, Fairview Park for games. 10, 12, 14 U Baseball Leagues, 10, 12, 15 U Softball Leagues, ages eight to 15, as of August 1st. Registration is open and runs through March 31st. Residents fee $70, non-resident $80. Practice begins in May and games begin in June. Teams will travel to Strongsville, Brook Park, North Homestead, Homestead Falls, Middleburg, Fairview, and Fairview Park for games. For complete details, visit www.brooklynrec.com. Brooklyn Youth Soccer, Mark Court Park, April 16th to May 21st, Tuesdays. Ages three to four, Fridays, 5:00 to 6:30 PM. Ages five to six, Friday, 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM. Register online through April 21st at www.jumpstartports.com. Recreation Center will be closed Good Friday, March 29th. Silver Sneakers Report, 2023. Andy Selhertz wanted me to read this monthly, one by one, but I'll just read the total. Just kidding, Andy. Silver Sneakers Revenue, produced revenue of $32,760.50. Next Recreation Board Meeting will be held on April 15th in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission Reports, Councilman Coyle.
Thank you. The March 21st Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting was canceled due to a lack of applications. The April 3rd Planning Commission Meeting has also been canceled to a lack of, due to a lack of applications. The Planning Commission has a work session scheduled for Wednesday, April 3rd at 6:00 PM via electronic means to discuss amending Section 1105-03, General Fence Requirements Within the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. The public is encouraged to offer any comments or questions prior to the meeting by emailing those comments or questions to Don Ford, which her email address is dford@brooklnohi.gov. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. School Board Liaison Report, Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. The School Board met this past Tuesday, and during that meeting, the Board discussed an update to the Strategic Plan 2030. There were presentations from school leadership to explain the ongoing work they are conducting. High School Principal, Mr. Larson, talked about various programs and events such as the We Empower Student Leadership Program and the Polaris Employability Seminar. This has been a great success with the program. A 2% rise in attendance in the high school from this time last year shows that the programs are working and that the students are interested. Over on the elementary side, Principal Mr. Boland talked about the steps that are being taken for social and emotional wellness, as well as cultural awareness with the help from the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio. Some things that are being focused on are Diversity 101, Conflict Resolution, Bystander Training, and Student Leadership. Some updates to look forward to on the operations side of the school were streamlined HVAC system, bathroom renovations, updated fire system, updated security system, and maintenance projects for the summer such as painting. Lastly, something that I think will be a great tool for the teacher-to-parent conversation is a new program called Parent Square. This is, this will put every bit of communication from, in one place, from the teachers to the students to the parents. This program will automatically translate what is written into the family's first language. This will be a huge help for some families that don't use English as their first language. The Board's next meeting will be a workshop on April 2nd in the Treasurer's Office, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll now have reports of council. This evening, we begin with Councilman Selhertz.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to all those that took the time to vote either by mail or in person. Congratulations to Brooklyn High School's Music Department and Theatrical Department on putting on The Little Mermaid on March 14th, 15th, and 16th. It was good stuff. The set design and construction was great. The pit band was superb. Personal favorite for me was the character Flounder. It was a really enjoyable show. This Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the High School Auditorium will be the March Concert performed by the High School Band. If you have time, please attend and see what is being taught and performed by our students at the concert. Consider it as seeing and hearing what your investment in our Brooklyn schools is accomplishing. Thank you for the Easter Bunny showing up this past Saturday morning at the Senior Center despite the snowy start of the day. And congratulations to Kathy Sullivan, the manager at the Brooklyn branch of the Cuyahoga County Library, for at the end of this month, she is retiring. May she enjoy it to her fullest, and to everyone, have a happy and joyous Easter. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley?
Thank you. Good evening. First, I would also like to thank all the residents that came out and voted and exercised their right to vote last Tuesday. It appears that the school bond issue did pass pending a recount. This goes to show you that every vote is important, even in a primary such as the one that just happened. I know the school really needs some updates, and I think this will really get them started in the right direction. Also, last Tuesday, I along with other leaders of the city had the privilege of being invited to be a guest reader at Brooklyn Elementary School. This was an effort to promote literacy. I read two books for Ms. Larson's first grade class. One of them was a fictional book that my son loves called The Very Clumsy Click Beetle. The second book was about solar eclipses. I was hoping to get the students excited about the upcoming solar eclipse. However, some were just worried about going blind looking at the sun. They were very intrigued, and they are looking forward to it. Speaking of the eclipse, as Mr. Tansky said in his Rec Department report, the Rec Department is putting on an event at 2:00. There are still some fine details that are going to be added to that. Please look for the city's website or call them in the upcoming, upcoming days and weeks just to get the fine details. Lastly, I would like to wish everyone a safe and blessed Easter holiday, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Barowski?
Thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to say thank you to the voters of Brooklyn that exercised their right to vote this past Tuesday. I reached out to Superintendent Caleres, and he's been very patient on the complete results coming back. Issue 26 passed as well, and that will benefit the entire community. A big thank you to the staff, Mayor, and Jack that helped to make the Easter egg event this past weekend at the Senior Center, as successful as it was. And finally, I'd like to wish those that celebrate it a happy Easter, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Tansky?
Also want to thank everyone that voted, wishing all the residents and their families a very happy Easter. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Grodick?
Thank you. Good evening. First, I would like to congratulate Councilman Barowski on his primary win. So congratulations on that. Also, I would like to thank Councilman Coyle and Mosley for their diligent work and open mind when it comes to Ordinance 2023-40. It's been a pleasure to work with both of them. Just one more note about the eclipse, which will be in the history books two weeks from right now. The library also has glasses available for you. I just went to the front desk last week and asked for a pair, and they asked if they were there, and they said, well, how many do you need? And I said, just one, and they handed me one, and off I went. So if you are looking for solar eclipse glasses, they are at our library. And if you have a student that attends Brooklyn City Schools, they will be coming home with one. They'll be coming home with one by Thursday, so they'll have to keep track with, track of it for the next 10 days. So there's, you know, every day, there's more excitement about the eclipse, so make sure you're prepared. Keep your eyes safe. Obviously, that message has been spread to our young students, and they're more concerned about going blind. We'll work on it. We have a couple more days with them. Speaking of that, Brooklyn City Schools will be on spring break, and the weather looks pretty good, so please be careful. Keep your eyes out for the kids that hopefully will be out enjoying some spring-like weather. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coyle?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This may be a little redundant, as many of my fellow council members have already mentioned, but thank you to those who took the time to vote in the most recent election, whether in person or by mail. Many recent election, including this school's facility improvement levy, have come down to being decided by just a few ballots. It is very important that everyone stays informed and exercises their right to vote as they truly all do count. As the weather hopefully warms up over the next several weeks, pedestrian and bike traffic will begin to increase. I've personally witnessed many distracted drivers all around Northeast Ohio the last several weeks, so just a reminder to please do not text and drive, and be cautious when backing out of driveways, especially as Councilwoman Grodick said, the students will be on spring break. Last weekend, Councilwoman Grodick, Councilman Mosley, and myself attended a city council member training seminar put on by the Ohio Municipal League. It was a very informative training that helped further strengthen our knowledge and power when it comes to city municipal government. Lastly, tonight, a substitute ordinance for 2023-40 will be introduced. This has been an extremely long process, but for good reason. All of council and the mayor want to ensure that this is the right ordinance for our city. In a time where DEI policies and ideas have become politicized, it is very important for us to work together to get where we are today, where we were, where we are today. I'm hopeful that this will be the last substitute, and that everyone will agree with the updated verbiage. Our ultimate goal is to ensure everyone in the city feels safe, included, and that they belong here. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abruzzi, just some clarification, because I know residents will ask. Are the glasses only available for those who are coming to the program at 2:00 PM?
No, we actually have a supply at the Senior Center and Rec Center for residents if they like them also for free.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And while supplies last, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
We also have some at City Hall.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. And of course, the library is also while supplies ask. So I would encourage people, if you are interested, to get your glasses while the, while we all still have supply. I too would like to thank everyone who voted in the last election, and, you know, over the last several years here in Brooklyn, like, I feel like we're the poster child for the message that every vote counts. We've had several come down, you know, very, very close, including having a period of uncertainty as to the outcome. So, you know, if you ever think your one vote doesn't count, we have several examples here in Brooklyn that every vote does count. I'd like to thank everyone who supported the spaghetti dinner fundraiser for the schools and also the play, both very worthy causes. And I too would like to wish Cuyahoga County Public Library Brooklyn Branch Manager Kathy Sullivan all the best in her retirement. She became an integral part of our community, and she deeply cares about the community of Brooklyn, and I wish her all the best in her retirement. And to those who celebrate, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Easter. Next, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to thank Mr. Abruzzi, Maria McGinty, Rachel Legowski, and Councilman Selhertz and Barowski for making the event on Saturday morning for the Easter egg hunt a success, despite the terrible weather. We still had a couple hundred people that showed up at the, at the Senior Center on Saturday morning for the event. So thank you for all the work that was put into that. And to go along with Mrs. Grodick said, I want to wish a congratulations to Mr. Barowski on his primary win and best of luck this fall. Brooklyn was once again awarded the title Tree City USA from the National Arbor Day Foundation. This is the 39th year for this award, so congratulations to the city for the work there. The Exterior Home Maintenance Grant Program is currently accepting applications. The city will accept these completed applications in the Building Department through May the 19th. This grant is up to $3,000 for exterior maintenance. There's more information on the city's website, or by calling the Housing Manager Lev Kolchitsky in the Building Department at 216-635-5213. And again, those applications are due by May the 19th, and late applications will not be accepted. So if you're going to get an application in, please do so in the next month and a half or so. I too want to say a tentative congratulations to the school on the levy passing. As Mrs. Pucci said, we're in that time of uncertainty right now. There are still provisional ballots that have to be counted, as well as any late arriving absentee ballots. We should know everything in the next few weeks. There will be a recount on this as well, as it is under the 0.5% threshold, but I don't anticipate the vote changing. So things look good right now, and so congratulations to the school, and hopefully everything stays on the plus side. I too had the privilege of attending the Brooklyn Reading Day at the school. I enjoyed some time with Mrs. Kaneski in the kindergarten class there, and a lot of interesting comments. They opened up for questions, and there was not one question. They also made comments, and it was, it was actually a lot of fun. So thank you for those that put that together at the school. It was very enjoyable. Some updates on some things that are going on around the city. The I-480 in Tideman Turn Lane Project, that preconstruction meeting took place last Wednesday. The work is slated to begin in mid-April, and electronic message boards will be placed both north and southbound on Tideman two weeks prior to the start of the work. And once that works, work begins, it should last for about three to four weeks. The turn lane from Memphis onto Tideman, the gas line has been relocated. First Energy is now scheduling their pole relocation, and AT&amp;T is in their final preparation for the relocation of their utilities as well. The light fixtures at Memorial One are now completely installed, so the baseball field is done. The last thing that needs to be done for the final restoration is the restoration of the field around it from the equipment in there, and we would look to have that done in the next couple of weeks before baseball season. The I-480 in Tideman Landscaping, which is the other two quadrants up by the highway entrance and exit, that preconstruction meeting was held today, and this work will be substantially complete by the end of July, and that's per ODOT's requirements. The Senior Center Sanitary Improvement Project is completed. The tank is in, removed, and the restoration of the land has been done, and this project came in actually $10,000 under budget, so we're grateful for that. The Memphis Road Diet, the bid opening took place this last Friday. The lowest and best bid was from Specialized Construction. Their bid came in at just over $1.3 million. This is well below the estimate, and what's budgeted for the project, construction should start in late spring and will last through the balance of 2024. As Mrs. Pucci mentioned a moment ago, the city did receive a word that we're receiving $200,000 from the EPA for the Ohio Recycle Ohio Grant, and that was for the one-armed garbage truck. And the city was basically a 50-50 split on that, so we're grateful for that grant. I do appreciate council's consideration for Ordinance 2024-9, and this is the ordinance that would remove the permit fees that the city would charge the Brooklyn City Schools for construction and renovation. Obviously, with this levy passing, there's going to be about $20 million renovations. Those fees will be substantially high for that project, and we'd like to see those fees waived, so I'd appreciate council support on that. Last week, I completed and filed congressionally-directed spending grant paperwork for fiscal year 2025 with the federal government through Senator Sherrod Brown's office. The city applied for funding of $378,050 that would cover the cost for three new police vehicles, ballistic shields, radios, police truck and trailer, and mobile radios. Once information is released from House Representative Max Miller's office, we will file the same paperwork with their office. And this is the same process that we went through last year when we were able to secure $529,000 through the congressionally-directed spending. Since our last council meeting, both the House and the Senate have both approved this legislation, and President Biden has signed it, so it will be coming our way, and we're anticipating paperwork from the DOJ, and that money to be coming within the next six months. That's good news. Currently, the Police Department is now accepting applications for lateral transfers. Thus far, we've received three applications, and the, that portal is open through the end of April. And for all those who do celebrate Easter, as been mentioned, I want to wish everyone a happy Easter and a safe weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Director's Reports, and this evening, our Finance Director, Ragus, has a report.
Good evening. Just a brief overview of the General Fund Financial Report through February. On the revenue side, overall revenues are 18% of the estimated amount, and also 13% more than in prior year due to an increase in income tax revenue, specifically an increase in nonrecurring revenue that we received this year that we did not receive through February of 2023. On the bottom half of the income statement, on the commitments, the commitments are 28% of the budget amount. As we discussed at the last month's financial report, this is due to the timing of our encumbrances, and also overall commitments are 7% more than prior year. We received our distributions from Rita for March. Total distributions are $1.31 million, which is $55,000 more than March of last year. Included, our payments are classified as nonrecurring or one-time revenue. Excluding those payments, income tax revenue for this month is $5,000 more than March of 2023, with withholding accounting for a gain of $32,000, while net profits and individual taxes account for a loss of $27,000. So overall, promising start to 2024 through February, and expect the trend to continue in March as we receive those income tax figures this month. Are there any questions from City Council? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we'll move on to the two notifications. As has been mentioned, Ohio EPA 2024 Recycle Ohio Grant for the Automated Garbage Truck. Grant is $200,000, city match of $194,760 for a total cost of $394,760. And thank you to Councilman Barowski for suggesting this. And then the 2024 Community Recycle Awareness Grant of $3,747 that the city will use to purchase the recycling cart stickers, and thank you to Mr. Verba. One thing I do want to point out to residents, and that is several years back, we had an initiative that was very successful in reducing the contamination of our recycling, and we had a very extensive educational campaign. When we get these stickers, you're going to notice that there's a couple changes, and I just want everyone to know that it's not that the city changes their mind about what we're going to recycle or what we're not going to recycle. We do, we are taking our recycling to a different facility now, and then there's also fluctuations in the market whether or not there's a demand. So the two changes are under cups, which are paper and plastic, empty it and rinse, no straws, throw away the lids. And the other change is under the plastic. We can now recycle the plastic tubs. So again, you know, we had a successful education campaign. Things have changed, so let's just, you know, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And now we'll move on to legislation. Ordinance 2023-40, which is on second reading, enacting Chapter 157 Inclusion and Belonging Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. We will be substituting an amended version of this and placing this on second reading. So we need a motion for that, please.
Motion to substitute.
Second.
And place on second reading.
Motion to substitute and place on second reading.
Thank you.
Second.
To accept the substitute and place on second reading, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky. Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-8, which is up for second reading, amending Section 1105.03, general fence requirements within the planning and zoning code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. Under New Business, Resolution 2024-9, which is up for third reading, requesting adoption under suspension of the rules, enacting Section 1345.02, fee exemption within the building code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. And again, this is to exempt the Board of Education from the fees relating to its renovation projects. Any comments or questions? Okay.
Introduced by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. I skipped one. Ordinance 2024- Oh, I'm sorry. Under 2024-8, which is amending the general fence requirements, we need a motion to refer this to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
To refer ordinance number 2024-8 to the Planning Commission, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
And thank you, Mary Jo. At this time, we'll have our second public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized. Please remember to limit your comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening. Kelly Crawl, 10523 Manoa Avenue. Although we don't have certified results, I would like to thank the residents that took the time to vote for the bond issue. These repairs and upgrades are much needed, and I appreciate those that took time to either attend a presentation or attend a tour of the facility to really see for themselves the condition of the facilities. There are a lot of rumors online, and I would like to just address a couple of those. The $800,000 for the 11 bathrooms was a low bid that came under our initial budget. Those renovations taking place this summer were paid for by Esser grant funds, not the bond issue. The computer lab was falsely publicized on social media as a gaming center or arcade. Just as the gym, which holds physical education classes, is also used for extracurricular sports, or the auditorium, which holds music classes, is also used for extracurricular drama events, the computer lab, which is used for classes, will also be used for the extracurricular esports team. This is not a dedicated esports lab. In addition, we received $266,000 in technology grant for this lab. Our administration is very good at looking for free money in order to stretch our dollars as far as they can go. As I told a resident that was uneasy about voting for another bond issue, this one has my name on it, and I am confident in the decision to ask for this money and have trust in the administration to spend the money wisely. I would also like to thank you for the legislation that you just passed. I didn't know about it until I walked in today, so that was a nice surprise. On another note, those of you sitting on council were elected by residents of the city of Brooklyn to serve the community for four years. You campaigned on promises to make Brooklyn your priority. I find it offensive that you would openly campaign for another position while not having yet finished your obligation to the city of Brooklyn. I sincerely hope that during this upcoming campaign season, you don't lose sight of your commitment to the residents that voted for you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Vic Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I know I've been told the last time, but on these streetlights, is there any reason we really can't update the future lights? I've been told, I talked to other people, and it's the same complaint. Somebody said it's on the Facebook site, which I have no idea, because I'm not a Facebook person. But again, these lights are dim, and you guys know it. The medium on Memphis, do we really have to do that? Can't we just put signs up, turning lane and such? Now we're going to pay, like you said, well, we can have the people that do the trees and everything on 480 come over and do this. Are they going to do it for free? I'm doubting it. Ceiling fans, a big ceiling fan person. And the vestibule, whatever you want to call it, where you come in with a 75-foot ceiling, maybe not that tall. Any reason no ceiling fans are put there to move the hair around in the summer and winter, to cut down on the heating and the cooling? The park, the park off of Bit Off, I think that's Marquardt or whatever it is, any reason there's never been parking added? I know there's room, because you look from one street down the other, there's a width of like a street, which when I was a little kid here, the parents would tell, yeah, they're going to put a street in there. They never did. I don't think they ever will. Any reason you can't blacktop one of those sections or so to put parking in there, maybe from the media money there to make parking for some of the people, to alleviate the streets being jammed to the hills? The summer camp for $200 a week, are they making a profit on that, or does it cost that much for one student to go there? Just, to me, it seems a little high, but when I was a little kid, you know, things were a lot cheaper. $200 seems like a heavy crack. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn? Mayor, I don't know if you wanted to address any of them?
I can address the, Mr. Abruzzi can address the YMCA summer camp. The Marquardt parking thing, that's come up a couple of times in recent years. Every time it comes up, we have a discussion with the residents that live over there. They don't want any part of it. That park was designed to be a walk-to park. That's why we put the walking trail that connects to it. Yes, there are visitors that visit that park for games, but that is the minority of the time, not the majority of the time. And so I know it can be a pain over there whenever there are games there, and we try to put the signs up. We have our police patrol that to make sure that people don't block the parking. But there was talk at one time about putting a lot in over there. But again, every time we had those discussions, the residents that live on those streets did not want the lot put in, because that was meant to be a drive, a walk-to park, and that's why we put the walking trails that connect to all the streets over there. Mr. Abruzzi?
So for the summer camp fee, we handed off the camp to the YMCA this year. As you may or may not know, last year, our fees were $160 a week, which was well below like a community offered camp, if you want to say. So they did go up $40. I can't tell you what their profit losses on that, you know. But one of the reasons we did kind of, you know, hand it off to them is staff costs kept going up and up and up every year. I could tell you that we didn't really, we didn't profit from it when we ran it. I can't tell you exactly what their books are going to say on that, but I highly doubt it, just because staff costs have been raising every year and, you know, and that. But I could say that the 200, even though it's high from traditionally what we've had here, it's still, I would say, average or below average, especially for the area, so.
And just to add one thing onto that, too, is we were finding it more and more difficult to even hire staffing for that camp. And so we were almost, it was like pulling hair to try to get staffing in there, which is not, we weren't able to do that. And the Y has taken that over, which we're, I'm grateful for.
And I believe there is some financial assistance provided for families who qualify, that they're able to provide or apply for financial assistance, I believe?
Yeah, so there's two ways, actually, to get assistance for that program. So the school's actually offered a very good amount of funding this year for the Brooklyn City School district kids. And then the Y does offer a separate funding based on, I believe, its income that you could apply for directly with them, yes.
Okay. And just to add to Mr. Ardito about the parking, we now have a path at that cut through, so there's never going to be parking there, because we now did put the walking path in that we've been wanting to put in for actually decades now. So, and about the streetlights, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that we still do have some areas where the light does have to be either adjusted, or maybe it's not covering, like the sidewalk, that we'd still have some of those areas. And then, of course, we have the controversy, some people like, like more of the light to spill over onto their property, but some people don't. So basically, we're going with lighting the streets and the public sidewalks, and then that's it, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And yes, there are still quite a few. I just, we just kind of checked last week for four additional lights that'll be put up at various places, and there's still, I think, probably, no, Andy, eight to 10 more that we're, locations that we're looking at, so.
At the end of your street, there was actually a light pole that got knocked out by an accident. There was a light attached to it. So that's why the reason your end of your street is dark. But if you noticed, I know you noticed it, half a year ago, I marked it. There's, we're putting extra light on that, plus the light that's on yours is Outlook, wherever the other street is, South Ambar or something. Right. That one's pushing out towards Outlook also, so we upgraded that. So that corner should be brighter once they get done with it.
Putting the light in the South Ambar now?
Yeah. There was, when I looked at the GIS map, there was a light on it. They put the pole up. It's just working with First Energy. They never put the light back up. So we're kind of increased the light on that. But then we've also got the one to the next pole that's going to have a light, too. So that corner should be good.
And we are at the mercy of First Energy. They send us the design, then they send us a bill for it, and we pay it. And then we get on a waiting list to have them actually put them up. So. The lights that were put up in the city were designed by a professional engineer that the city hired several years ago for wattage, based upon what our specs were, which was, as Mrs. Pucci just mentioned, to light the street and the sidewalk. And I said this at the last council meeting, I know, as she just mentioned, some people want it to light their front yard. Other people are very, other people are very glad it doesn't light their front yard. So the goal of streetlights is to light the street and the sidewalk.
My sidewalk, dark as could be. If you don't want lights, move into the rural area.
Thank you. Does the mayor or any other councilperson have anything else to say?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I just want to thank the mayor for introducing the fee exemption for the schools. Over years of watching and listening, specifically, Mr. Slattery has mentioned it many times, and I'm glad that it's finally saving the school quarter of a million dollars on this project. Very smart.
Anyone else? And I guess I would just point out that it's really saving the residents the money, because that's where the, that's where the money's coming from. So this is saving all of our taxpayers that amount. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
To adjourn, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Barowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Thank you.